One quick question before it. Scott, did you give us the comments to Conister Point? Okay.
Because it wasn't even going to be up for discussion.
Yeah, okay. That's fair, but if you could.
I can send them there.
Would you?
You did send. Someone sent them, because I have them.
That was back looks a bit old.
Yeah, I have October 21. It was in one of Rox's emails, or it might have been one of yours. It was attached.
Oh, that's probably what it was, because I just.
But it was never specified. It was just for review. It was never up for.
If you'd just send it again, so it's at the top of my email, I appreciate it.
It had quite an extensive list, wasn't it, Scott?
Yes, three pages.
Yeah. Can I just see it up here?
Zani Sada, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there. I didn't go over it because it wasn't.
I think there's more comments this round than there was the first time.
It was. There was one back in.
Who's his engineer?
Clark.
Clark. Okay.
The Clark crew?
Yeah.
Mr. Clark from, well, New Oxford, I think.
Has he been here before?
Uh, once.
Yeah, I can't really picture. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I hate that, but where are we at?
You're open.
So, to hand out the first rough draft, before I get to that, I did have a question, because I probably should have brought this up before and filled out order. There's a map behind you. Yes. Do you want, I know the district's necessarily changed, do you want me to go to have my G S staff to go through the process, show what the existing land use is as part of that map to show what's, normally you do zoning work until you do the first step with this map. The existing conditions, character, show what's where, see if it, you know, where you, if you want to make any changes. Do you want me to go through that process to show you what, because those districts haven't been changed since they were a little bit, since they were done. Would you like to go through that process as part of this as well? Not saying you have to change anything, mind you, but if you want to go through that process just to see.
And your office would handle that. I think that's, I agree, Scott, that'd be a real good tool. Because that map was implemented back in 99, I think, and it was more or less, you know, marked out. And we didn't have that tool to work with.
There's changes to that map, is what you're saying.
Well, I don't know that necessarily needs to change.
I know, I say there are changes. There's a couple of small changes.
There's a difference between zoning and existing use. There's a lot of existing uses would not meet the current zoning ordinance since the grandfather, the three day of zoning work.
Yeah, and that would be good to have the new map.
That's a separate question, but that would be good to have too.
That would be good to have the new map.
But to your question, Ron, there are changes, small changes. I can think of a couple. Yeah.
And another thing is, when you start changing these guys, you start changing zoning maps, you change property values, and you gotta be careful.
Taxation.
You gotta be careful.
Yeah.
All the process that we do is, we take, we start with, frankly, it's the assessment land use codes, and then we, our M P S person has been doing this for years. She has a process, she goes through it to feel, to check things with the aerials and cross-check things, and then we bring it here to, you guys, to look at it and tell us what is wrong on there. Then we identify where there's groups of certain types of existing uses, and then you would theoretically build the districts off of that. I don't, just to be familiar with the area, I don't know that there's a lot of changes that would be necessary, but it's a good part of the process to go through if you haven't looked at the map any time recently, so.
Well, it also builds an explanation if somebody wants to challenge something, and if, for instance, you don't have enough commercial. Well, here's how we thought through that, and that's why we have what we have. We want to protect agricultural or other reasons. The other thing I think that would be interesting is along our borders, because I know there's situations where we're agricultural, but you cross that border and you're in commercial. I think that would be useful as we think through this as well.
Yeah, so what I'll have them do is do the existing land use component first.
Okay.
And we can look, I'll bring that back next month, and then we can look at that, and you can tell me what is or isn't, or needs to be changed. First step in the process, and then we can see if there's something that might need to be addressed. We'll say that outside of, you know, the borough and a couple of things, there's not a lot of there. There to, I mean, in my mind's eye, where the colors are is pretty much where it would be. There's not really like any pockets of other stuff in the white areas that I think of. So, but we'll.
Is there any merit to designating the Fruit Belt as far as, I know there's some, there is some designation in the county in it, isn't it?
Yeah, the Fruit Belt Historic District is deemed eligible. It hasn't, it's never been fully followed through, but the deemed eligible status has, has, that's an official status to it. It's not an official historic district. The one thing that I might have my, I, my rural system division do is look at the, when I, we split out different uses, I might have them go through and identify some of the different types of ag areas in there, just to see where those might be. You know, you're in the area of the county where it's, it will transition from the edge, top end of the Fruit Belt into, as you get over to the other side. Here, you're into the more husbandry and crop, and that's that sort of thing. So it kind of, there's a transition up in, once you get around 15. So, might be useful there, but that's all, that's all part we can put on there. But I should have brought that up before, and I just didn't think of it. I thought of it as I was putting this together. So, we'll do that. I'll bring that next time. Take a look at that.
And I guess the other point or question I might have as we look at that too, is I know there are other townships around that have different, other zoning districts than we have. You know, Tyrone has two commercials. It just, I, for us to understand those types of differences, and that's a neighbor, that's a township right next to us, we should probably understand that as well, especially if we're ever challenged.
And so, right, and as I mentioned, there's not a lot of there.
Yeah, yeah.
How many districts you have and the different techniques you have depends on the settings you have.
Yeah, what you have, yeah.
Something like Tyrone, where they have, Southern Tyrone, which is down towards Hill and Hillendale, and down towards Newchester, which, you know, is one type of ag, then Northern part of Tyrone, they have Fruit, the Fruit Belt.
Fruit Belt, yeah.
They have an interchange, they have industrial area up in the top settings on the other side of yours. So they have a couple of different settings that have, that need to be treated differently.
Yeah.
You know, so they have two ag districts, one that focuses on just what I would say normal ag, and one that focuses on the industrial side.
I didn't even realize.
Now, whether that's, whether that would hold up if challenged, I don't know.
Yeah.
But they've, they have two ag districts that one focuses on Fruit Belt, the other focuses on, into the industrial ag side, as an example.
I've been, just in the last two months, approached more and more about A I data centers and warehouses. And two of the residents said about completely banning them. And you just can't do it, but can you make the restrictions so tight that it, I know we don't have much C I district, and as far as I'm concerned, in our township, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Because if anybody needed a large chunk of land to do something like that, it would require a zoning change. And I would hope that we have enough sense not to to change that in any way that would make it appealing. And I said before, I ran into a gentleman at an auction up in a township, on this side of Chambersburg, between Chambersburg and Shippensburg. They regret ever going down that path. And, you know, we say it'll never happen in this township, and I hope that's true. But there again, they may have said that 20 years ago too.
And we may not have the large, a large single tract, but when they come in, they'll come in and just buy everybody out.
Exactly, exactly.
But they'd still have to resign.
So, you know.
Yeah.
Part of what I would say.
Well, what would your suggestion be?
At a very broad level, Scott, I'll use an example from another municipality here in the county.
Well, I know you guys have dealt.
Right, well, and this goes back, this goes to the part of your first question about banning it and that sort of thing. Municipality, they came into rezoning, I'll say 15 years ago, give or take, at this point. With the intent that they wanted to add tax base, and they wanted to add, pump up things where they were paying real estate tax and that sort of thing. So they went hogwob.
That's one of the big promises too.
Right, and they went hogwob and do this, this, and that, and then they got a lot of proposals, and every time they get a proposal, they didn't like it. And finally, we finally sat down with them, and after they were complaining about it for the entirety of time, we said, do you remember why you rezoned this this way? Yeah. How's that working out for you? Not, not great. Okay, well, let's maybe pull it back. So they, you know, there's a tendency to want to, well, we want the tax base, and then zone it for that. Well, be careful how much you do that, because you might say, well, we're okay with this type of use. But there's a lot of other stuff that comes with it. As for, for better or worse, you have an interchange nearby. You know, and that has, there's some appeal that, and it's a major, it doesn't look like, but it's a major interchange.
Yeah, it is.
It's a significant crossroads
Yep.
in the region from a, from a trucking and shipping perspective, because from that interchange, you're half an hour, 45 minutes to York, Harrisburg, Carlisle. It's two interstates, I mean, that, it's, people, a lot of people in the county don't real, look at York Springs nor that, it's kind of, nothing there. They don't understand the regional importance of an interchange that connects like that one does. Your saving grace a little bit is the topography of it. It's down the hole. It's not easy to.
Get in and out of.
To get in and out of, and it's not, it's not like down at 15 and 30, where it's, where it's flat. Another similar one, where it's flat and wide, and you can get to it easy.
Yep.
So there's some pros and cons there. You do have to accommodate all those things. And I would talk about the big three warehouses, data centers, and, you know, utility scale solar are the big three that people usually want to ban. And it gets down to what, where do you want to accommodate them? They're all, they're all industrial uses in visual aspect. One of them, the utility scale solar, needs a lot of land. It doesn't always look industrial. You know, it is, but it doesn't, it doesn't look, look it, because it's set back, it's, you know, it's not built, it's not a building, it's just a, there. And so put it in their rural districts where the land is. I, you know, I have another municipality that has a very, very tiny industrial, commercial, combined commercial industrial district, kind of like you guys do, because they don't, they don't have, there is none. They have no commercial, there's some little commercial, but no industrial. There's no point in putting it anywhere else than this little area. They put it there because that's where they want it to be. You know, so that's a decision you make. You'll see what I've posed here for your ag district here. That's, they'll, as we go to use, you kind of see what I, where I'm recommending that we have had with some of those bigger uses. And just a hint, it's going to be in the blue area. It's where I'd recommend putting it, the sort of thing. Because that's, in your setting, that's the probably best place. If it happens, that's the best place for, approximately to those, to those.
It's my understanding that, correct me if I'm wrong, that worst case scenario, they buy a chunk of ground in the C I district, and as long as they abide by the rules and regulations you have in place, you basically can't say no.
Correct.
And that's, is that, that's true.
That's true, but the key there is, you have to make standards that they're meeting be what you want it to be if it's going to locate in. So if you want a data center, if there's going to be a data center located in hunting township, these are the standards it's going to have to meet. And if they meet it, you might not like it, but these standards, we think, are the ones that will help protect the community. You know, if you just put it in without any standards, you're going to get the worst of the worst design, whatever design they plot on the table. So the key is making, you might not like a use, but you have to put the standards in place to make it operate within the community and not the detriment.
And you can't, you can't ask for standards that aren't in the ordinance.
Correct.
You have to make, you know.
You have to have it in place to acquire.
So in other words, data centers, the big issue with them is border usage. So you could put that in your standard that they would have to get a geological survey for what.
And a lot of standards.
Also for the electrical, what they're going to pull. That they gotta have provision that they can have both of those.
On water, the municipality, you have a lot of control.
Okay.
On electricity, not as, not as much as water.
It's P U C, isn't it?
Because the P is the utility commission and the federal, they have some, but yes, you can, you can require them, they have to prove that they have it.
Prove that they have it, so they don't put hardship on rest.
Well, they were built, they don't have it. Well, that's what they're using, yeah.
What's that?
But they're not putting it here. They're using nuclear power, which is.
Isn't that something we need?
They're lucky to put it right next to that plant.
I mean.
Yeah.
They're looking much closer to that.
We have a set of standards that we'll bring here to show you, to, we would recommend you consider for those uses.
The water would, the water would be probably the biggest thing for us.
Data centers use a ton of water.
No district, your band township has a very stringent water component to their study component, to their data center.
I've been watching the news, I guess it's a Manchester Township over in York County. They're working to, they're not, they're close enough to Three Mile Island, that they're, they're trying to head this off. They haven't, I don't think they've been approached yet.
Well, Three Mile Island is, I think, Microsoft.
It's Microsoft. You have to, you have to have a deal with Microsoft. It's not, you don't get it from the.
Microsoft, but they're electric.
But the township is trying to set up this, like what we're talking about, to head it off before it gets there.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, and honestly, that's the, because you have to provide for every use, the best you can do is, okay, this is the area where it fits the best, or has the least impact, or whatnot. You know, just to be blunt, in your township.
There's not a lot of flat ground, for one thing.
No, but the only, the only place near, that has even the potential for the utilities is in your commercial district.
Yeah.
It's, the water, there's not nearly enough water supply there to do it without them bringing something on their own. The electricity is not there. They have to build their own substation there. So it's not an easy thing. You know, so is it a high probability? I mean, not as high as, say, near, next to the substation, next to the gas, natural gas plant down in, down in Hunterstown.
Hunterstown, yeah.
You know, not, not nearly as, you know, big potential as that, but it's not zero. You know, but we'll bring the standards for, you know, we have the standards for warehouses, we have a good set of standards there. Data centers, we have another set. Solar projects, we have another set. So we have some decent standards that we'll share with you, that you can decide what are those you might want, what you might want to add.
I took a trip on 81 down to Greencastle, and you talk, you talk about topography. They just took, it looked like, and they basically just leveled it, and there's four warehouses. Three are already up, and they're, they're working on another one, and maybe another one. And I was dumbfounded at the amount of earth that there.
Regrading isn't the problem. It's water and electricity.
Taking that mountain and just, what do you call it, mountain, leveling it all, leveling it out, and one warehouse right after another.
I want to get to this, but the last thing I'll say is, there's, there's municipalities kind of gets hammered routinely for being difficult to work with. And what it boils down to is, they have standards, they have, they want their community to look a certain way, and they're not willing to compromise on what that is. I will pick on Penn, one Penn Township over in York County. We've been told, well, it's so easy to get things done there. Yeah, because they don't really care what it looks like. There's no, there's not as much of an attempt to
Aesthetic.
Make it aesthetic, have it fit in. I would challenge anybody to look at the zoning map, or even an aerial of the area around on the York County side of Hanover and the Adams County side of Hanover, and tell me which looks like, looks like good planning, good planning, and compact design, and which one doesn't.
You're right.
Penn Township on the, on the York County side.
Right, there's a reason those, those two municipalities over there have 15,000 plus people each.
Yep.
Franklin County is a good example of a place that has resisted zoning for many, for many years, especially on the, depending on which side of 81 you're on. You know, so sometimes, when you don't have those protections, you have minimal ordinances, you're going to get stuff like that, that's.
It almost got jammed down our throat with Mr. Moon on his trailer park. I mean, that was a perfect example. We didn't have in place what we needed at the time. He tried to do that, he just about shoved it down our throats.
Right, and, and, right, so you have a historical example here of how that, the challenges.
Like to head off, keep that going happening.
Which we're doing. We, there's a lot of useful information on counties and townships in this state and other states that we can learn from. Both some of them have done it right, and some that have done it completely wrong. So that's what Andy's helping us with.
So, I handed this out today. I'll go through it here quickly. Structurally, 501 is your statement of legislative intent. That's what you want to, want to encourage. It's not word, it's not word for what you have now, but it's in the vicinity of modern, not with, what an optimistic modern type of language. I think it still fits what your current district says. It's, but it's bringing it in line with some more modern views. 502A lists permitted principal uses, these are the uses by right. Couple, couple things here. I have A1 and A4 highlighted, agricultural operation and farm. Let's see, what's the difference? Agricultural operation is the, is the fields without any structures on it. Farm has structures. Note, it says excluding agribusiness operations. Agribusiness operations will be, are defined as CAFOs or concentrated animal operations, the ones that require the different levels of minor management permitting. Those are, that use is permitted, is down on the next page, under whether it's definitely exception or conditional use, which we'll get to. Number three, hogwob, facility, access, meeting hall. I can, there's a number of different uses in your current orders. I kind of combined that all into one, into one use. Horticulture, including nurseries and greenhouses, is, I added that, combined that, added it by right. That would, that would include your, you know, there's the one that's up on the other side of county line.
Quality acres, quality greenhouses.
Something like that type of, type of farm there. We've updated, updated churches, the places of worship to reflect, there's a lot different denominations around, around there, and that seems to fit better. 16, small wireless facility use within a right-of-way. There was a state law that passed a couple of years ago that mandated that in every zoning district. It's, it's like the miniature cell tower technology. Distributed antenna systems, I don't know, I'm, so, so, this might say legislation, we decided that needs to go everywhere, so.
And the feeder units.
I did highlight it. 17 vacation rentals. And then on the next page, under B, homestay, which is in red, doesn't have a number. I might ask, what's the difference? Homestay is when you're renting, is you're renting out a room. Vacation rentals is when you're renting out, renting out the whole house.
So that would be Airbnb, Verbo, those types of things.
If it's, and there's just some slightly different requirements within each, within each one. But that's, that's the general, general difference. One is an accessory, because it, because it's just a room and a house is otherwise occupied. The other is the whole use of the structure. Let's see. So here's where your current ordinance goes to, it said permitted uses and conditional uses, and nothing, nothing in between. There's a lot of things that, they're not, they can be principal uses, but they're, they're best, they also can be accessories to an existing use. So we've kind of pulled some of those out, like accessory, accessory structures building, you know. It shouldn't need to be said that you can have a shed or something like that on your property. Just saying that you can't. The flip side, going down to number 23, personal use building. Best way I can describe that is, everybody knows where the high school, where the school campuses. You go north towards York Springs, there's the restaurant on the left side.
Yeah.
Use Carlisle. And there's the, the road that goes off, where the taxidermy thing is and whatnot. Past that, on the right-hand side, there's a whole building there in that property. It's a farm. It's, I'm assuming it's there just to store equipment, which you're using on that site. That's a great example of a personal use building. There's no, it's, there's no principal use of the property, but they need a structure there to maintain. That's what a personal use building is. It gets around its own issue of, you can't have an accessory building to nothing. So, that's the two differences there.
And all of these terms will be defined in the definitions.
There's definitions, there's performance standards with them that we'll get to. I didn't want to clutter the discussion.
Yeah, this is just the starting point. Yeah, yeah.
But I'm looking for tonight, is, do you see anything here that you really don't like that I need to move around? Accessory energy systems, that's, that's your, if you want to put solar panels on their house, or something.
To power something that's on your property.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Accessory dwelling unit, that, you have a use called echo housing, we call it accessory dwelling unit, is virtually the same, the same thing. That's, that's, that terminology is, there's a set of standards that comes with, comes with that, that would address that issue.
And replace echo housing. Okay.
Bed and breakfast, there's two options. It can be an accessory, or it can be a principal use. That might be the first point where you might have to think and give me a decision at some point on what you want, what your thoughts are there. It's, it fits best, given your setting here in this district, mind you. But if you want it to be accessory, that's fine, but if you. But if you want it to be accessory, that's fine, if you want it to be a principal u- principal use, that's fine too. Just need to know where, where you, what, what you would want that to be and then where I can put it. I, I'm, 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 when I was going through the use, I, I said be keeping. Is that, I put it in accessory, cause I assume that's what it is, but I don't, don't know, is that. You said there's something like that here, is that something that's, is it truly, is it accessory to something else or is it something that's, its own use on property?
Brewbreakers have a. And it's, I'm, I don't know where they actually base out of, but yeah, they. Work at it, they got probably a thousand.
Brewbreakers.
Okay.
They put them.
Yeah, they're out.
Farms around.
They. So it's, that's, that's the only, that's the only thing they do?
Well, but their main building is out there in Gun Club Road.
Yeah, yeah.
One of them.
Well, but they.
That's where they.
Up in Slave Law Town Road they had them.
They have a building up in there.
Well, yeah, they have a couple of extr-.
Cause they, they.
They actually have a couple of sea containers they start.
They got one down.
In the wintertime.
They got one down after where they separate honey. Uh, over on Upper Bermuda, there's one they do there.
But that's basically an agricultural.
Yeah, that's an agricultural thing.
It supports.
They scatter the hive around the summer after poll, after fruit pollination in different places, and they'll do them there now. So it's an ongoing thing all the time.
Okay, but, okay, I just wanna, I wasn't familiar with it, so I wanna make sure that, so it's an actual principal use, not an accessory, so I'm gonna move that out. Campsite RV hosting, that is the, that is the rural version of the Airbnbs, that is an actual thing.
I've seen on TV, they, they have, there's an ad on floating around about one out, you know, the farms and stuff, they have their RVs. Is that where?
Making it accessory to a farm operation, not a principal, principal use there though. For the size. Cottage industry. We always say cottage, a cottage industry and a home occupation are the same thing, it, the only difference is where it's conducted. Home occupation is a smaller version that's conducted within the dwelling. Cottage industry is, is the version that's, that's in the, the usually pole building out back. Think like somebody that, somebody that runs a barber shop or a beauty salon. Out of a room in the house, versus somebody that's doing a small engine repair or something like that. Out in a, in a thirty by forty pole building they built for it. It's a little bigger in scale, allows a little more, more, more people, but still accessory to. The, the, the house.
See, I'm, I'm struggling a bit with this because I think, and, and there's more than this that I'm struggling with because. It depends on how we define it, whether I'd be comfortable, whether we're calling that permitted or conditional.
There's, there's, the definition we have comes with some su- with some size restrictions.
And that's where I am.
Yeah.
So. I can't get comfortable calling this permitted until you tell me what it is more specifically.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Understood. Custom butchering, custom butcher shop, that was, that was mentioned before. That was in here, the flip side of that, it, that had a municipality that, years ago, there was a, they got wind of a, a proposal. Well, there was, there were, actually was, was an operation down in. Uh, Mount Joy Township maybe, and they got wind of one that was gonna happen over in Paradise. Of one, it, it's the. Like the. Green, like the law butchering. Type. Where they, where they butcher it.
Just put their throat.
Live. Hauled off. So, and they wanted some restrictions, so we, we put that in. That one come, comes with the, at the, another use in their industrial district that. Industrial district, that's basically the slaughterhouse component.
Yeah.
To it, so it establishes the, the tiers of it, so.
That was based on Sharia law.
Need that, but, you know, that's, that's where that comes from.
I know the one you're talking about, that says it's based on Sharia law thing.
You were involved with one right outside of Lake Mead, Redding Township.
I, I, I had heard, I, I know, I know of that one.
That, that went away, but.
It, the, the one that was down.
Potential there.
The one in, I'm not sure if the one in Paradise, I think the one in Paradise got a little further along than that one. The one, there was actually one, it was either Mount Pleasant or Mount Joy. There was one operation down there for, I think it got shut down. I mean, to the point, point where people bring, were taking stuff away in taxis from out of state. It was not a great. Situation. So.
Taxis.
But that's, that's, that's where that comes from.
What's that you call it?
Farm market, farm-related business, produce stand. Again, there, there's, the only difference is usually in scale, in si- in size. Um, farm worker, farm worker housing, I don't know if you have that. Have that now. You, you do.
We do, we do.
That now. But, so you have it now as by conditional use. As standalone use, this would be, as an accessory use to an existing farm.
Okay.
Is that? I mean, that, that's, it has to be accessory to it, not if you want it to be. That other one I can, but this, this difference now, your current ordinance should have to go to the board of supervisors, this one. It would just be permitted or land, depending on what they would need.
Yep.
So, I'm gonna look to the. People that may have more experience with than I do to know what differences and what.
That's probably ought to be a little bit. It'll be a path to have it, but I think it should maybe be just a tweak tighter than what you just said.
Okay.
You know, if you get what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
It ought to be a little bit more defined. Path to get to it.
So are you saying conditional?
Well. I mean, we got one, but I'm saying it ought to be. You don't wanna put it up. It ought, it ought to be a little bit more defined where you're gonna have it and how you're gonna structure it.
Well, you, you can define it, we can define it and still be permitted, that's probably what you're about to say.
You're talking migrant.
Yeah.
Let me.
I'm thinking. A farmer that hires somebody to work for them and they're gonna supply housing and they.
That's what we do.
How, have a house for the family.
From an ordinance perspective, it's the same thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay.
Right, it depends how, how you, how you would, would define it.
Because if you do.
But there, isn't there government laws for the migrant housing that wouldn't be if I was building a house for somebody?
There is, but again, that from a zo- that's outside, that's not. This, from a zoning perspective.
Okay.
Farm worker housing is farm worker housing, no matter who, who's, who's in it is. The ordn- the ordinance, ordinances are blind when it comes to who's in most of who's in.
So it doesn't matter if it's seasonal or permanent?
Right, the question I would, would have is. Should it be? An, the, a principal use on a property or accessory to the farming operation?
Well, it should only be used for that farming operation, it shouldn't be used for.
Right. Gotcha, so then, then.
Should it be accessory?
Well, do we have it as a principal anywhere?
It's currently, well, usually it's, it's accessory to something.
Yeah.
Like the question, there, there, you might, you might need to have a couple of accessory uses that go through a different process here, so. I, I, I just. I, I think I get, I get which, I get your concern, I, and I think I understand where, where you're coming from, let me, let me see what I can.
Okay.
Come up with here to.
Okay.
I have, I have, I'm gonna have to ask a question of some, pick somebody else's brain, but I think I have, I have an idea there.
Okay.
Uh, green, so fourteen nineteen greenhouse nursery that are accessory to an oper- operation. That's, you know, you know, the first one was the, it's the only thing there, this is the, it's accessory to something else. I have green, high ton of greenhouses listed there and I'm gonna, I know what they are. My question is to those that might have, have more experience with them than I do, is. Is it, is it? Worth calling out separately? Or is it from a, a regular accessory greenhouse? Or is it, it's use and design such that it needs some? Use with some standards to it? I'm, I'm just, I'm asking, I, I know what they are, I just don't, I, I'm.
I don't know why it would have to be different. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a radiative heat transfer issue, that's why one side of one isn't. So I, but I don't see a reason. Could it would be different, unless I don't understand something.
I can't see it.
Yeah, neither. Don't matter, don't deal with them.
Ron, do you know anything? Ron.
What?
Do you know anyone that's.
Why would that be different?
No, I do not.
Okay.
All I, all I know is the, is the Amish seem to like them.
Yeah.
Um, and they're, they're, they're a little more permanent than they, than they lead you to believe.
Okay, that's a fair point.
I, I want to.
I appreciate everything today. To the limit.
Yeah, I had one, I had one come in, in Redding Township that, well, we can pick it up and move it. Thinking, well then why are you putting it on the con- on a concrete pad?
Yeah.
You're not picking the concrete pad up and moving that. Why are you digging a trench around it for some?
Yeah.
Come on now. Fifteen, sadly, sadly, we had to add fifteen to our, this model in another municipality. To, to make it, yes, you can actually grow. Agricultural stuff on your own property. Because they had people complaining about it for some reason, which I still don't understand.
Because someone had a family garden.
Oh my gosh.
You mean, what about a gardener?
I don't know. I mean, it's, it's listed as accessory use and it's, it's in there, somebody, look, you know, you can do this. It's, it's, we shouldn't, we shouldn't have to say, this is why ordinance, zoning ordinance get a bad, get a bad rap.
Yeah.
Because you have to put silly stuff like this in there, that's, that should be common sense. But somebody complains about something for, probably cause they can't get along with the neighbors and now all of a sudden. You have to, have to. Put something in there to just cut that off. Let's see, eighteen, no impact home-based businesses, you have a version of this, it's, it's home-based business limited impact. Like I mentioned before, this is something that the state legislature thought in their infinite wisdom needs to be in every zoning district that allows residential. Uses. Uh, there's a very specific set of standards that comes with it, a definition, everything. Defined by, in the planning code. Basically, this is the home occupation. Well, it was written well before, but it's the, basically codified work from home. Before, and telecommuting, before it was actually a thing.
Yeah.
That's really all it is, there's no, if you're running, doing some, running some business from home, there's no outward sign of, sign of business, no deliveries, any, anything like that. You know, you're doing an, an account, running an accounting business from your house.
Yep.
You're doing everything, everything by, by Zoom or, you know, over the internet, that sort of thing, so.
So is this like working for another employer or living yourself in the home occupation, working for yourself?
Home occupation is, is where there's customer traffic. No impact is where there's no customer traffic.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you're working for somebody or not, it can be your own business.
It's, it's entirely about the level of customer traffic at the site. Again, twenty and twenty-one, processing ag products on site, we shouldn't have to say that, but we do. Storage, you know, we shouldn't have to say that, that either, but we do. And then wireless communications, that's, that's where, where they're putting a. Like co-locating on an existing tower or they're co- co-locating on an existing structure or something like that.
And they put them on top of silvers too.
Right, but, and again, that would fall, fall under, under, under this, this sort of, sort of thing. See, here's where I'm, where I'm going to, to need a decision from you, doesn't have to be tonight, but at some point. Um, there's two way for uses that, you have a, a, a ton of conditional uses, that everything goes to the supervisors, that's fine. But we're, we're trying to. Reduce that, to limit that to the ones that, that takes time and, and legal expenses and.
And cau- and causes friction.
Right, so we're trying to limit that to, to uses that actually need, have, need for more intensive public scrutiny. The, the main, the, the main question is. Do you wanna still keep, keep sending those as conditional use to the board of supervisors? Or do you want them to go to special exceptions to the zoning hearing? It is currently conditional use, so I'm assuming that's what you're com- comfortable with. But I wanted to have, have that discussion again in case something you decide you want to change. I would recommend doing both. But it'd be one or the other. But I'm.
Mike, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but condition, the conditional uses. If we allow whatever we put in the conditional uses be things that the board of supervisors are more comfortable with, making decisions on. Where the special exception is gonna be something that's gonna require a zoning hearing to maybe make a. You know, pretty tough decision, yes or no, one that.
It's, it's the same process.
But it takes some away from the.
It does, it, I, uh, on the turn, township solicitor told me once that. They didn't like using conditional uses because quite frankly, they didn't want their elected body to face difficult decisions. That it was, it was a political decision, not a, not an ordinance decision.
Right.
So they want, they wanted it in print as to what?
They wanted it to be a special exception to abort so that the, the supervisors didn't have, weren't forced to make a decision.
Or, or make it a permitted use, just not have to deal with it at all, yeah.
You know, it's both legal process, it, it's, it's just a matter of, of who here, here makes the decision.
Who makes that decision though?
Right, that's, that's the main, that's, really, that's the only difference, is who makes the decision. An appointed body or elected body. Some decide, hey, we're the elect, we want the elected body to make those decisions, that's what we elect them for. Others don't wanna, don't wanna make a decision, they'd ra- they'd rather. Let the elect, the appointed people make it. Either way, either way, the elected body can be a part, is a party to the, to the case, so. You have to make a decision now, but it's something, something to think about.
Yeah, in, in a special exception. If I'm not. My years working with zoning and stuff, it, it's almost, it's almost a guarantee, isn't it? I mean, if you, if you meet the conditions.
It's the same for both. It, it, special exceptions and conditional uses, there, there, it, there's nothing special or unique about them, it's uses permitted with conditions. And as long as you can prove you meet the conditions, then you're, then you're, you're, you know, it has to be permitted. Now, then it gets into health, safety and welfare and, and, you know, are, are, is there a specific testimony on specific issues that are, that are raised? That you can make a decision on, it gets kind of complex, but at the core level, it's a permitted use with conditions. That, that you have, that, that requires the app can document that they're meeting, how they're meeting those conditions.
As opposed to variants, you have to prove hardship.
Correct.
See, my, my view has been that. If, if something requires another level past permitted, which I think we have too many things already that are past permitted, but that's separate from what you're asking. That it goes, if I have an option, I want it to go before the elected people because that, there's consequences there. They have to deal with their next election. And they have to. Be more responsive than an appointed board to the, uh, the citizen, the taxpayer. And so my view has been, if you get to the point where it's not permitted because of circumstances like we've talked about. I'd rather, I'm one person, I'd rather see that go to the supervisors. But I think we ought to limit those period, I think we have too many things that go to the supervisors now. But that was part of our philosophy historically. So. The appointed board. Yes, there's less pressure on you guys, that's a decision for supervisors, but. Ninety-nine percent of the people in, in this township don't even know who the appointed board is. They walk in here so many times, I've, I've had people walk in here and say, who are those guys? I thought I, I thought they were the supervisor, did all the supervisors get voted out and these guys are in? They don't understand our appointed board at all, until they have to face them. And then it's, it's an uncomfortable situation for sure. And then if it doesn't go the way they want it to go with the appointed board, they're off to court. Which is expensive and ugly. So that, again, one person's philosophy on, on this, go before the people that get elected. If you have to go before anybody. If you have to go before anybody.
As for the specific uses that we have having under there, agribusiness operation, that's your const- your const- the the two levels of. Concentrated of industrial animal operations. Number two and number seven are related. Ag the ag tourism, ag tourism and rural events venues. Rural events venues are. Like the bittersweet, the one down on Dixdam off of Dixdam Road. Down there.
What is that? Is that like a barn wedding thing?
It's your it's your wedding barn, that that that's worth, some of them, some of them, they're wedding barns, they're they're not actual barns, but still.
Yeah.
It's it that's the principle, that's a that's a principal use on the property of the property, that's the only, that's.
Oh, it is.
Main use of the property.
As opposed to an accessory.
Yes, for the ag tourism operations where where it's accessory to an operation.
Okay.
Those are split out with separate requirements because. It's turning out that the events venues have impacts. That are where that they are becoming, it's there is no. Ag use of the property, it's the use of the property.
Okay.
There and it and it it's it's a commercial operation that's take that's needs the rural setting to work.
Okay.
The ag tourism operations, that's, you know, your. How can an operation corn maze is those those plenty of examples around.
And I think we have wedding bar right in Latimer Township, it's a it's a big cattle farm and it's a farm. And they do three, four weddings a year.
And you can and you can do it, the the events venue is the one where it's not. One a quarter, it's.
I I'm with you, I'm with you and and there's. Yeah, there's fifty cars that drive in.
Going in the mechanic's.
Yeah, no, I get it, and that's a big difference.
It's not just a park town once in a while, it's every weekend.
And the farm, the farm is no longer a farm.
Hospitality use.
Well, it's it's more more a tourist.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get that, I get that.
True story, I I I have one municipality where they they want want to operate one, they didn't want to put sprinklers in. That's which is required for those sort of things by by the C code. So they said, okay, fine, that means that you can't have chafing dishes, you can't have open flames. So they go and and the code officer, the first wedding they held there. The code officer was invited to because it was in the family. Walks it walks in, he looks at it, he goes, man, I can't see that.
Yeah, exactly.
They had the doors closed and the chafing dishes open, so. I'm gonna say I didn't see this, but this can't happen again.
Yeah.
You know, so they tried to cut a corner there and it it backed.
Well, don't invite the zoning officer to your wedding.
That that's the difference between the between the two ones, the accessory version, lower key the others, it's a principal use.
Yeah.
Campgrounds, ordinarily, I would not, we would not put campgrounds in an agricultural district. However, given districts in in township, it's the best one for it to be in. Um, but as said, we're making it by use because typically these things. There can be low tests and what we're starting to see in especially in some of the ones like Gettysburg is. They're having, starting to have year round residence.
Exactly, yeah.
Which in which means that if you're gonna start having that, then then we need to have some standards there that that we're viewing these things as if they are.
What zone are those in?
So in in oftentimes, if you have if you have a district, like in our the county words, we have an ag district and land conservation district. The ag district is is your function of productive farm farming operations, your land conservation is. Is. Open space for for view set. Less less focused on farming, two different ones.
Okay.
We generally put the campgrounds in the open space and view set one because it's taking space land out of.
Okay, but if we don't have that.
If you don't have that, then then it it needs to go in the rural district.
Okay.
Um, same thing with golf course. I mean, it's 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 not an act, it does not fit, but it's the only district you have.
Yep. Interesting.
And again, resource extraction, same thing. It's, you know, we'll probably put it in the in the industrial district too, commercial district too.
Yeah.
But again, given that a lot of those things come with outside permitting, that you don't always have control over at the municipal level.
Yeah.
It it kind of goes there. Cattle is one of those where I put it there, but I'm open to putting it somewhere else. I have thoughts, so what I mean, it could be. Committed by right, it could be by this, or you can simply put it in the commercial district too, I really, I it doesn't really matter to me, I've seen it in seen it in both.
Yeah. I'd probably lean towards both. What's what's Musselman's in Tyrone? What what district is that?
So that's probably, that's probably our new ag district.
It's prob- that one's probably.
Yeah, that's it's been there for a long time, but I'm sure it's surrounded by farmland.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, it can it can be in both, I I real I don't, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
My my que- my question's more, how do you want, how do you want to permit it?
Yeah, yeah, I'd probably say both. You know, it's interesting, our philosophy, and I'm speaking for everybody, I shouldn't, but. I felt like our philosophy was, if it's a commercial enterprise, that's not farming related. By either state definition or some logical definition, that it went in commercial, not ag. Now, I'm sure we had a few exceptions to that, but I can't even think of one, but. These are clearly exceptions to that, you know, if I'm if I'm putting a commercial, I find golf courses commercial. And now, it doesn't make sense, but in our place, I don't know, maybe you could piece together a couple of commercial properties and put a golf course in. But it does make, yours, what you're saying is logical, but it it kind of runs against what I think our philosophy has been. So maybe that's good, maybe that's a good outcome.
That's how I would put them in in this by acquiring it, an ex- an extra step.
Yeah.
Because they're, they fit, but they, it's not a direct fit.
Yeah, agree.
You had your current, uh, uh, the two family conversion into like dwellings, you have those in your current ordinance. I put them here only to have the discussion. I'm not sure it's it's a great fit. By what the intent of the district is. If you want them there, I'll I'll leave them there, but I don't think it's a great, it's not traditionally a great fit in a in a agricultural conservation district.
And what would you say residential only then?
It would prob- it would probably go in when some of the residents did.
Yeah, both, maybe both of them.
Yeah.
Can you check on something? I don't know if I'm correct or not, but was there a recent law or case that? Came out that a townhome or a duplex is per- has to be permitted in any district that single families permitted.
They were trying.
It well, no, the the well, mobile hu- mobile homes are considered a single family. You have that in on it, I can check.
Yeah, I I think there was a legislator out of Philly Philly area. They were they were pushing for that.
They're try, they, yeah, there there's a package of housing bills in this in the state legislature that that have been pushed, but they haven't, they haven't been.
They haven't gone anywhere, they haven't gone anywhere.
I doubt so.
Andy, explain to me what those two things are. What is a two family conversion? What is a two family dwelling?
A duplex.
It can be, it can be, it can be two, side by side, two.
Okay.
Bottom, or the conversion of a single family structure.
To making it into to to not two families living in the same house.
We see, we see them commonly in like in Gettys, say Gettysboro, for example, where there's a house that they're they're cutting it in two.
Right, right, and you.
There with two separate, you know, or they're or they're limiting the property line as as one.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I'm tempted to just take take unless there's some something like. State case law, I'm tempted to just take them out, just I don't think it's, I don't think it fits this setting.
Just allow a single family housing in ag. I don't have a problem with that, I don't know about. I mean, it's. Yeah, you have to have sewage facilities for it. It's tw- it's double, it's double what, basically, like, maybe not quite, but it's almost double what a single family. Sewage facility would be. And most of, we don't have that great of soils to as it is.
And give it, and when your, the current ordinance is written, D P was allowing package systems.
Yeah.
In rural areas that they're not doing anymore. Uh, next page, uh, sawmill. There. Number nine, the the sort of catchall for the winery, cideries, breweries, those those sort of. Operations like.
How they work, how they work with a dry township.
Yeah. We're dry, does that make a difference? Or do you have to put that in in case you're not always dry?
Yeah, not true without it, but you got up on Georgetown Road, like there on.
Is that in Cumberland or is it?
Is dry, is that dry related to commercial sale?
In Cumberland.
Or.
Yes.
If it in cider.
Or what?
Cause some of the.
It's alcohol sales.
Yeah, so some that would that would probably eliminate the tasting room. But so so could somebody have a brewer?
Make them their wine and then sell it someplace else.
Like cider.
Yeah, yeah.
Up there, there's a couple of them out, uh, where they're producing it on site. Yeah.
They consume it, but they're making it and shipping it out.
Yeah. Okay.
I mean, I I didn't, I didn't, I, to be frank, I didn't know your job.
You live in our county, our township.
I don't, I don't drink, so.
I don't either.
That's why the Tucker board's just below the line.
But still.
Uh, cell towers. Number eleven. I again, a lot of stuff comes up because of other municipalities. I I have, I have an outdoor with indoor in parentheses, I had a municipality that we had a lengthy, I'm talking two meeting argument. Over. Which, what was there a difference between indoor shooting range and outdoor shooting range and should they be permitted in the same district? Or different districts, and they settled on the outdoor ones being in the rural district. With our ag district and the indoor ones being in the commercial district. And I'm like, I don't shoot either, well, I do, it's been, oh, this is summer camps last time I did, I don't know the difference. So they they didn't bother to explain it to me, so. I'm putting it out out there, do what's, is there a difference and do you do you care? Was it just shooting range in general or what?
And this is, this is commercial.
Well, it could.
I mean, if somebody just cites in their rifle.
Either either or.
No, it was like a gun club.
Could be a gun club, it could be a shooting range.
Well, we have up in Upper Bermuda Road, the.
Handgunners.
Handgun.
Handguns.
Yeah, but I guess, I guess I don't have an issue of indoor and outdoor being in the same district.
Yeah, the indoor requires a special.
Like an example. Is that at state police barracks?
Thirty years.
Indoors you should target practice.
International competitors, fifty-four.
You you're John, okay with with just in just shooting ranges in general, that makes that.
Yeah.
That makes that easy.
Yeah.
Um, one that I overlooked back in the first on the first page, number eleven, um, outdoor recreation uses. Again, traditionally, that would be in a more open space oriented district, but you don't have that, so it goes here. Now, notably, that that is not the same thing as commercial recre- commercial outdoor recreation.
Help help me out there to differentiate what you're saying. What's an example of one that isn't commercial and one that is commercial?
It could, it could be a fishing. Access point, or it could be a.
Okay.
Hunting or a or a trail.
Okay.
Things or some something like that versus.
Fish in Derby at a pond or something like that.
You know, versus a commercial, a a just a broad commercial recreation type of use.
Okay.
Like any indoor gymnasium or something.
Yeah. For the for the commercial, commercial one.
Commercial, yeah.
Would that fall, would a. Community park fall under that like Latimer?
Um, community park would probably fall fall under the government, you just form. But it could be outdoor recreation.
I know.
It's it could be, could be the one.
Yeah, I mean.
Right, but but again, it's it would be, it would, public or private, it's irrelevant, it would be still outdoor recreation, so.
Yeah, see, again, we've differentiated public and private, so and even in the the the. Ball fields up on, um, whatever that was, uh.
Ridge Road.
Ridge Road, thank you, yeah, where they wanted to make a commercial enterprise, I mean, that was that, we differentiated that, that's a commercial enterprise. That's different than.
Right, and and but we would be drawing that, plans to draw that distinction too.
Okay.
Like the commercial recreation would be in here, would be most likely in the commercial district.
Okay, yes, okay.
I'm gonna back up on this shooting range and just bring a point up about that. I know just over the years, people around like East Berlin, fishing gun, uh, gun club. You gotta stop and, I mean, I wanna see the regulations on that because you think that they. They live in the side of shooting range all day long and somebody's coming in there and shooting.
Yeah.
It's no different than a midget go car, a race car track beside you noise wise. So.
Probably works if they're shooting all day.
Well, the caliber guns of people shooting now are ridiculous.
Yeah.
I I they come in there with semis and ARs and bam, you know, so. That I think, I mean, I I'm a hunter, I shoot, but I think we need to be, that needs to be. Your 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 would really be spelled out.
You're you're hitting on the site that caused that conversation in the first place.
Okay. Well, we can hit that, we can hit that concern through a definition, um, but it's a fair, it's a fair.
There's, I think there's there's standards with it, some of that, some of this, there there, I don't wanna, like, if I didn't form standards, this is gonna be. Triple, quadruple the size.
Yeah.
And when you get through some of the stuff first and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Keep the process going, but but that's that my that's exactly precisely what.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Conversation in the fir- in the first place, but also gets to which. Which direction is the range going? Is it, you know, is it going way for towards or away from the from the road or other houses? You know, one of the issues that we raised in the, that's for state police barracks, the range that they have. The range is shooting towards thirty.
Yeah.
Yes.
And and we're like, oh, okay, we understand construction, but muscle lift is a thing. You know, you're still shooting towards.
Right.
Stuff. Whereas the other, if you're going the other way. I mean, I guess if you put into power enough, you could hit the gas station, natural gas plant. There's more distance from there, the ra- range to the gas plant than just from the range to thirty.
Thirty.
You know, so it's things like like that, that, you know, how how is it being? They don't wanna wanna ban it, but they want it to be a good name. Is what it boiled down to.
Is that a handgun and rifle range or just handgun?
I don't know.
It's probably both.
Well, it's it's own the. The county put one in behind the nine one building.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
And we're like. We we have one, but they wanted their own range, that's why there's two.
That's not unusual. It's a different, it's a different group of officers.
Handgun, a little more.
State police wants their own, county wants their own, it's. It's almost always that way.
Um, okay. Try to get the rest of the stuff, I'll try to go pretty quickly here. Um, so five oh three is general district requirements, this gets into some some of the. The subdivision process, then five oh four is all the dimensional dimensional stuff. Five oh three A, there, you see two tables. The top one is what's in your current ordinance. Bottom one is a tweaked version. You have, like, you have it broken down, like every, basically. You have, like, you have it broken down, like every, basically every thirty acres, which, which is fine, it's, it's pretty broad. I've sort of compressed it a little bit. In practicality, there, there's not much difference. You know, it, it might, you might get a little more on the low, on the low end. With smaller properties, you know, but it doesn't say number, number at the high end. The other thing is, you know, you're, you see, it says six to ten acres, eleven to thirty acres. Well, there's areas in between those numbers.
Yep.
And that's what's mattered.
Yep.
As we've, it didn't when this was done.
Yeah.
It does now.
Yep.
That's why it goes to point nine-nine.
Yep.
That, that sort of thing. So, I, we have proposed to cut your first one out and go with the, a revisment that sort of compresses it a little bit. It, it raises it a little bit in some, but it evens out when, at, at, you get to the large properties. Um, A one, it starts on the, on the next, on the bottom of the page. Uh, there's four there. And this goes to what type of subdivisions does that allotment not apply to? The first one is if it's transferring it to a government entity of, of some sort. Usually that's because the government is buying it to, like, a substation or, you know, a pump station or something like, like that. Um, and you don't want to penalize the property owner to force them to use one of their allocations for something that the municipality or authorities buy.
Makes sense.
B is, again, if there, if it's a lease area for, for a cell tower. You know, that, it's, it's not necessarily creating a direct lot, it's creating a lease, lease area.
Yeah.
Don't punish them for that. Uh, C is the, if it's, you know, one acre or less to the, to the adjacent one, as long as everything meets the minimum maximums. That rarely happens, but you'll find those little unique situations where, where that would. And D is lot additions, lot additions don't count because of the, the allocation. Two, they have to indicate which lot with subdivision plan, whether they're not using all the allocation. They have to indicate where the remains, what's left can be used. Three is a, a part, they have to document a table or chart on the plan that says, here's the amount we get, here's the amount that's been used, here's the amount that's left in terms of what their allocation is, so that it's on the plan. So that there's no questions about how much is left and whatnot. And believe me, we've had to, municipalities, we've had, going this in for a long, this just modeling for a long time. We've had to go back and correct them because they've either intentionally or unintentionally misstated what it was. Now, usually it's because they changed surveyors and they, and they didn't know the previous one existed. But anyway, that's why that's, that's all there. Four has to do with, and, and you might not, if you don't want this, that's fine. Once they've used all their allocation, they have to record, record a amendment to the deed that says that they're done. And five states that you can't increase the number of subsidies you're allowed by adding land and property. So, if you have hundred acres, hundred acres, you buy fifty, you don't get the amount based on fifty, you get the amount based on a hundred. You can't add to the property to get more units.
If you keep the fifty separate, can you get whatever you have gotten on the fifty?
Separate, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
I had a question here. The number of lots allocated on the parent tract?
Yep.
Can we make it so it's based on the original nineteen ninety-nine? You can't accounting instead of what's new because, I mean, if something was already broken off, I mean, that, I mean, you're like giving away development units to a lot that was a business district, they didn't want to use it.
Hey, and that's why I have it there as in bold and red as insert date to choose what that would be. I've seen both. I, I, um, Mount Pleasant, for example, Mount Pleasant, for example, started its county zoning in nineteen ninety-nine. They adopted their own, say, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. They applied and they have this almost identical TARS from the map, the original map that we did. For their similar district, the application date is the original date that the county ordinance was applied. So, like, it goes back to a similar timeframe. I had another municipality that we updated the ordinance, we didn't change it, we updated their, their, their ordinance like this. And they restate, chose to reset to the new, to the date they reappointed the ordinance. It doesn't matter, or it's, it's a policy decision, whatever you decide to do. But if you decide to re, to say, well, we're gonna apply this fresh from the time we, we adopt this ordinance, then everything, it's like everything that happened before, it doesn't exist when it comes to the allocation. So, that's policy.
So, if somebody used their, used their lot before, they, they get to start over.
Recession.
And again, some have chosen to reset it, some have chosen to not. But it's, it's a pure policy decision as to which, which direction you would want to go. And again, it necessarily have to decide tonight, something, something to think about. Um, let's see. B is large lot, lot consolidation option. This is where, this is an option where you get, you take those allocations that you have and you can combine them to create larger lots. Now, this works best when you have a higher maximum lot size, say, three or four, because then it gets you better. So, I, I usually, like, when people call and ask me to have questions about, about it. I'll just say this, take the maximum lot size, like for residential, multiply it by the number of allotments you have, that's the acre you have to work with. Mix that up into whatever combination lots you might want.
Yeah.
There. This, this large lot, so, lot consolidation option gives you the, the ability to take, say, three, three units and create three allotments and create whatever size lot. It gives, it gives the, the property owner a little more flexibility on what to, on how to do it while still achieving the goal, which is, this, which is to preserve large tracks of, of productive.
I know that two acre maximum, that was probably none of the guys here remember, ain't, were on it, but at the time, we were being hammered with large, I mean, just big long strips being cut out. And that's where that came from. We wanted to, you know, instead of taking that hundred acre farm and just cutting these big long strips out like that, consolidate, keep the development out there and save the rest of the farm. And that, that was, that was what the thought was behind that, back, that was before, I, I don't think any of you guys were on the board then at the time. But it was. Yeah.
Well, that's a good explanation. I never knew why, cause two always felt small to me and I didn't know why we did it that way.
That's why, that's why it was done. Cause we, we were getting hammered with developers coming in and they were just butchering, like, take a farm and just butcher.
Yeah.
And cut these strips out.
Yeah. Like lots on an ocean or something.
Yeah, it's removed from us.
Good old hairy fox.
Combine the, this, the, the reductions of limitations on the number of lots and the size that it's not. There, there was, there was some other, there was some other changes that may happen to the, this district and those between the original adoption and now.
Right.
That, that also puts some restrictions on that, so.
Yeah, that's a good point. Cause we ought to think about that, whether two's too small, but. I, we, as long as we have protection against what you've discussed. Then I think going to three or four probably does make sense.
The flip, so, again, that's kind of why the, the subject of the plan we're talking about tonight. That's, that's kind of why it's the issue of what is the use of a lot and the maximum lot size is important. Because if you don't, if you allow them to call things farms or agriculture to get, to get around the maximum lot size, then you're more likely to have them chopped up into weirdly shaped smaller lots that are defeating the purpose of the district or creating those type of, type of lots.
Yeah.
That, that. C, cause we get through.
But before you leave that, doesn't that also argue though that we use the nineteen ninety, whatever, as our date instead of today's date? Cause I think we'd end up with refacing that all over again.
I'll tell you this, I did this in, in another, I did this in another municipality when I, when I was actually trying to stop them from making, from resetting it. I, I can, I, since we never throw anything away, I will go back and count the number of, of lots that were created in our, from our plans.
Yeah.
Between the application and now, so you can see just what number you're, in that, in that case, it had been maybe, it was like, I think, somewhere in the thirties over about, over about a fifteen-year period.
Okay.
So, it wasn't a whole.
It wasn't a massive lot.
But I can, I can go back.
That would be good. That would be good. That would help us understand. But I, I was right in the middle on which date to use until you said what you said, Ted. And then I came, then I come down on using the old date. There may be other reasons too.
I can't help but think, talking about this would affect this, what we're planning on talking about here.
Well, what we do may.
Potential.
Keep the old numbers.
All of them. They filed something old.
Yeah, yeah, we won't, we won't change it in fast.
Yep.
Maybe four or five times more and more it was to start with.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we should look at.
I know that one municipality, we've, we've, we've seen, I think we've only ever seen one that used allocation and it's come back for one.
Okay.
But it, it's, it can happen.
It can happen. It can happen. I would expect it to.
Uh, C establishes some, first, you know, for lot additions, how, how to treat, treat those, cause that, that's a common question. Oh, and, and there, um, C five, it talks about the deed language for, for lot additions where they have to do a single meets and bounds description. There's something similar in the new Souda we did, it's just reminding that they have to do it. So, like I say, anytime, anytime you see tracks on a deed, it's usually because they've, there've been lot additions over the years and rather than writing new meets and bounds description, just copy the old description from one week to new one.
Give it a track number.
Yeah.
What happened to D? What happened to D?
Um, it, it disappeared in my, my.
I thought that was a quiz to see if we're paying attention.
No, no, that was, that was me, that was me failing the fourth grade alphabet. It ha, it, it, it happens with, all the time. E, we probably need, need to come back and discuss, given what, where we are time-wise.
Yeah.
This is important about location of non-agricultural lots. Some have, or some, and I say this a lot, that there's some work, models like this that have some very detailed restrictions. And then they probably don't, don't follow them and ignore them completely.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's a good thing, but it's also incredibly difficult to enforce.
Yeah.
So, I have another municipality that has a, a much more, a very comp- complicated system in, in this district. The only, the only goods, good part of that is the complicated system makes it very easy to enforce this because it requires them to identify where all, where all the, um, unu- the non-ag land is. So, then it's easy to say, okay, don't locate it on the other stuff, locate it on this.
Okay.
But that system is also far more complex than you need, so.
Okay.
F is the ag protection note, which I, I believe is all this, also in the zoning ordinance, the Souda as well. And G talks, simply says that the, the minimum lot area requirements don't apply to the, um, parent traps. It's that common.
Which makes sense.
Let's see. Dimensional standards here. Um, if you've seen the current, current ordinance, this is a little bit easier to use. The minimum, minimum lot area, maximum lot area, I've highlighted some things, gonna have to have some discussion here about the sizes. You have one and one and a half acres in there now, I think that's a remnant in the minimum lot area. We'll have discussion in other districts. A lot of what you, your, your minimums in there are split by utility type. And that's, that's a remnant of a, of the time the ordinance was originally, originally written. And of a, a, a time when DEP was doing things differently with, with sewage approvals. Um, so, I, the one and a half, I would say is would be out, if you're gonna have one, but if you're gonna have the minimum as one and a half, then the maximum needs to be, needs to be, needs to be double that. So, that's just there.
That's a great point.
The other thing there is you have a different maximum size for, for residential versus non, non-residential, non-farm or ag.
I don't really.
I don't know why, but that probably needs to be the same.
Yeah, do you know why?
Farm, then farm and agricultural operations have no, no maximum lot size, again, that's part of what gets to the issue we just talked about, about tonight. And then because of the very, there's probably schools in there, because of the very specific situation that you're in where you have an entire school campus in your ag, in your ag district because of, that's where, that's where it is, that's, that's where the setting is. It, you know, that's carrying that over from your, that's in your existing ordinance, you're just carrying it over here, so. Not, again, that's your, that's one of those tweaks where you can't take a model from another district, from another township and just apply it here because you don't. This is the only township in the county, in the county where you have, have a school district in an ag district. You know, it's, it's just a very unique situation. Lot width.
Hundred fifty feet.
Good point.
And the two, two is in there.
Yeah.
The lot width at the setback line should not be less, that's, that's your anti-flag lot.
Yeah.
Situation.
Yeah. What, there used to be, and I don't know if it's, maybe I'm not aware of it, but it used to be a provision where you'd have a lot with the depth ratio.
Yeah, but it's, that's, it's.
Cause that is Souda.
It's usually written as, as generally that it's enforceable. This puts some teeth, this puts some, a little bit of teeth into it from the zoning perspective.
Because that's where, like, where you get, you used to get those lots of a hundred fifty foot long, a thousand feet long.
Yeah, and it got to the point where we stopped making comments on it because it was written in such a way that the municipalities couldn't enforce it.
Couldn't enforce it.
Okay.
D, E, and F talk about the set, the setbacks. Uh, those are just copy directed from, from your current ordinance.
Yeah.
We've added two, the two, D two and F two, that talks about, it gives the zoning officer some directive as to how to apply the, the front rear setbacks on corner lots. That's, that's, that's a, 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 always a difficult thing to figure out on, on those. Uh, maximum building height there, again, that's pulled from, from the current ordinance. Maximum structure height I've at, I've added. And I, I forget the exact use that, that caused this, but it was pointed out that all buildings are structured, it's like, all, all thing, all thumbs are fingers, but not all fingers are thumbs. Well.
All buildings are structures, but not all structures are buildings.
So. So, that's where that, that's where that comes from, comes from. The maximum lot coverage, again, that's, that's pulled mostly from what you have, what you have now. And the maximum vegetative coverage, this is something that, that, you have a bunch of things in your ordinance that talks about. Where is it? This is about lot coverage and impervious surface coverage and, and, and I know that was an issue, an issue with the school district with the plan for the middle school and, and much of those things. What this, what this does, it gives you, basically says, you have your lot coverage, it can be, be impervious. And the, the rest has to be, has to be vegetation. What that, what that really does is it's, it doesn't allow users to exploit pervious paving uses to exploit pervious paving to increase their, their impervious coverage. Because pervious paving is only pervious if you maintain it. If you don't vacuum it and don't clean it, the pores fill in, it's not pervious anymore.
Yeah.
So, i- if you notice, like, like the maximum coverage residential is twenty five and the vegetative is seventy five, it all equals a hundred. So, that's, that's, that's there. Then five oh five is just, we'll cross-reference the other section of the ordinance that you'd also have too. There was one thing, like, one, current one, so I wanted, that I wanted to ask about. Like, I, I was, I see I was highlighting a use that I was creating. The, like barber beauty shops, that's, that falls under other use, like the, the home occupation, that you used to go with that. Geothermals, geothermal stuff, that's, that's not a zoning issue. Solar energy, we, that's, it's accessory, swimming pools, that's accessory. Um, you have animal laboratories in, in there. I don't know why it's in, why it's in there, I have a definition, it makes no sense as to why it would be. It's basically a place to, to raise animals for animal, animal testing. Not doing the testing, but it, I, I don't, I, it doesn't make sense in the district, I'm not sure. Is there something I'm missing?
Wasn't there a ti, upside the old wish, uh, bowling alley, something to do with that? Up beside the old bowling alley.
It was down around a little sound years ago.
Oh, it was, and the, on the garage, in the garage, they.
There was something, I don't know if it was that, but very, something related to that, with the egg embryo or something in there. I don't know.
Yeah, but, I mean, if you're.
That rings a bell.
And it had to do with bat seeds or something.
Yeah, that rings a bell.
But if you're just raising the animal.
It's just like raising.
It's just, you're just raising the animals.
Yeah.
Where it goes after that, whether it goes to the butcher shop or wherever.
I didn't ca, I didn't put it here, if, if anything, it's going in your commercial district. I don't think it.
And that makes sense, yeah, yeah.
The only other, that question that I had was why do you have explosive and black powder storage, low and high explosives listed as a condition to use? Is there something specific that, that there that that needs to be carried over for?
There's storage in our hun, in township.
Okay.
Black powder storage?
Well, fireworks.
Okay.
Interesting.
I used to shoot muzzle with her, I had a pound in the basement.
It's such a unique, unique use, that I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Fireworks storage facility in the township.
So.
There is.
That's all, that's all I have for, for here. We went.
I don't know, anything about it.
Yeah.
Had time to think about it, ne- next month, I'll, well, bring next month is at the, the discussion. Pick up, there's time to pick up with whatever. Feedback, questions.
Yeah, so I'll go back to my first point. A lot of this is gonna depend on how you define it and how you write the reg for whether it makes sense to be where it is. But good start, thank you very much, Henry.
Thanks.
Very much appreciated.
We gotta move along here, like, I guess we'll get Scott going, he has a long drive home. But do you have any comments?
Why torture you guys?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, our next meeting is November twenty fourth.
Yes, twenty fourth.
That's right before Thanksgiving, so.
Yep.
Are there any comments from the board or anything? Not hearing any, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Marlon, all in favor, say aye.
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 Vote, say a no.